I hereby call the February 6, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. If you order, it is now six o'clock. Madam Clerk, will you please do a roll call?
Commissioner Glenn?
Here.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Cohen?
Here.
Commissioner Rubio?
Here.
Commissioner Kendrick?
Here.
Commissioner Fernandez is stuck in traffic. He will be delayed. Commissioner Scoggan?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, moving on to approval of agenda. Any additions or changes to the agenda? All right? Any objection to approving the agenda as written? Hearing and seeing none, the agenda is approved. Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand? Mr. Benedict, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda. Resolution 2304. A resolution of the Matanuska Susitna Borough Planning Commission recommending approval of an ordinance amending MSB 1705, Essential Services Utilities Standards. Public hearing, March 6, 2023. Staff, Alex Strong, Planning and Land Use Director. Resolution 2305. A resolution of the Matanuska Susitna Borough Planning Commission recommending approval of an ordinance of the Matanuska Susitna Borough Assembly prohibiting onsite consumption of marijuana until such time as the state of Alaska adopts a numerical standard for operating a vehicle while under the influence of marijuana or a numerical standard for the presumption of being under the influence of marijuana, referred by Assembly, due back to Assembly by July 3, 2023. Public hearing, March 6, 2023. Staff, Alex Strong, Planning and Land Use Director. Any objection to approving the consent agenda as written?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the remove Resolution 2304 from the introduction to public hearing in legislative matters.
Any objection to removing Resolution 2304 from the introduction for public hearing legislative matters? Hearing seeing none? So are. All right. Minutes. Any objection to the? Did I just ask for objection? If there's an objection then on this?
Yeah, just to check that Commissioner Kendrick can hear you.
Commissioner Kendrick, can you hear me okay? Commissioner Kendrick? Have we lost Commissioner Kendrick?
He said he lost sound.
Oh, is he? So he's messaging with you? Okay, so please let us know if you have an objection to anything. All right. Introduction for public hearing quasi judicial matters. Doesn't look like there are any. Well, let's see. We got. Oh, we don't. Okay. No agency staff reports, no land use classifications. Okay. All right, then that takes us to audience participation. So it'll be three minutes per person for any items not scheduled for public hearing today. So that's five minutes for community council representatives. If there's anyone on the phone, if you wish to speak, plus star three. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak for three minutes on any topic not on the agenda for today? Is there anyone on the phone wishing to speak on any topic? There is one person? Okay. All right.
That extension is not valid.
Sure, if anyone's listening, we're having a little technical difficulties with the telephone for audience participation. Just bear with us for a minute.
Welcome to the Synexus Conference Manager. Please enter your conference. Joining conference.
Hi. Can you hear us online?
I can. I can hear you now.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Kendrick. Is there anyone online for audience participation today? Okay. There's no one online? Okay. Thank you, Caleb. Any objection to closing audience participation? Hearing and seeing none, audience participation is closed. Public hearing quasi judicial matters. Just as a reminder, commission members may not receive or engage in ex parte conduct with the applicant, other parties interested in the application, or members of the public concerning the application or issues presented in the application.
I'm just going to grab you a card to read here one member.
Okay?
Just to ask you.
All right.
I'm going to ask every member of these questions. Okay, so you're going to go ahead and do this first.
Okay. All right. All right, this is to all members. Do any? Do you or any member of your immediate family have a substantial financial interest in any property affected by this decision? Or will you recognize a foreseeable profit as a result of the decision? All right, I'm seeing shaking heads, no. Commissioner Kendrick?
No.
Thank you, sir. All right. Have you received or otherwise engaged in ex parte contact with the applicant, appellant, other interested parties, or members of the public concerning the application either before, during, or after this matter was submitted for decision? Taking their heads, no. Commissioner Kendrick?
No.
Thank you. And are you able to be impartial in this decision? Okay, seeing everyone nodding in the affirmative. Commissioner Kendrick?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. All right, I'll read the case into the record. Resolution 2301. A conditional use permit in accordance with MSB 17.70, Regulation of Alcoholic Beverages Uses for an alcoholic beverage dispensary bar known as Big Lake Brewing Company LLC, located at 5120 South Big Lake Road, Tax ID 9228000U012, within Township 17 North, Range 3 West, Section 28, Seward Meridian. Applicant Whitney Dow for Big Lake Brewery Company LLC. Staff, Rick Benedict, Planner 2. All right. Is the applicant Whitney Dow present? If you could come up, please? And Mr. Benedict? Looks like you're ready to go. Mr. Benedict, please proceed. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Rick Benedict. I am Planner 2 with Development Services Division. It's my pleasure to provide the commission with an overview of the proposed conditional use permit this evening. The staff report for PC Resolution 2301 can be found starting on page 23 of your packets. Please also reference your handout provided by email and in person this evening, which contains additional information. Whitney Dow, on behalf of Big Lake Brewing Company LLC, has submitted a conditional use permit application for an alcoholic beverage dispensary. The applicant is proposing to operate the beverage dispensary in a commercial building that is approximately 18,500 square feet in size. The proposed brewery will be the sole occupant of the building and is accessible from the public road system or by boaters operating on Big Lake. The applicant proposes to offer full bar service within designated areas inside the establishment and outside in designated beer gardens. In addition, the applicant will provide inside and outside dining services to these areas. The subject property is 3.44 acres in size and has been used commercially since the late 1970s. Big Lake Brewing Company will operate a building constructed in 1997. A restaurant known as Ardbark most recently operated from the building with a conditional use permit for a beverage dispensary issued by the Planning Commission in 2018. MSB Title 17, Chapter 3, Section 020, directs public noticing for all conditional use permits. Notices were mailed to all property owners within 600 feet of the site, to property owners within Southport Condos and to the Big Lake Community Council. A total of 17 notices were mailed on December 15, 2022. The public hearing notice was published in the December 16, 2022 edition in the Frontersmen Newspaper. The application material was posted on the borough's website on December 12, 2022. The public notice, application material, and a request for comments were emailed to the Big Lake Community Council, Borough Offices, and outside agencies on December 12, 2022. One positive response was received from a member of the public. No response was received from the Big Lake Community Council. Agency comments received after January 20, 2023 are included in your handouts and provide feedback from the State of Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities and the Borough Pre-Design and Engineering Division. MSB Title 17, Chapter 70, Section 030, requires a borough to consider certain factors such as drainage patterns. In addition, MSB Title 17, Chapter 70, Section 100, requires that the granting of a conditional use permit will not be harmful to public health. The Borough's Pre-Design and Engineering Division cited concerns that an effective drainage plan does not exist for the size for the size and scope of the proposed business. This concern focused on a paved parking lot. In light of comments received from internal and external agencies, Borough staff recommends approval of this conditional use permit to operate an alcoholic beverage dispensary located at 5120 South Big Lake Road and recommends a planning commission adopt into the draft resolution two additional findings of fact and two additional conditions of approval. The draft resolution containing these recommendations can be found in the supplied handout. The remainder of the staff's recommended findings of fact and conclusions, conditions of approval, can be found on page 37 of your packet. That concludes my brief. If you have any questions, I welcome them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Benedict. Before we proceed, I want to acknowledge for the record that Commissioner Fernandez is here. It's 6:13. And so I'll need to ask you, Commissioner Fernandez, a couple of things before we proceed. Do you or any member of your immediate family have a substantial financial interest in any property affected by this decision? Or will you recognize a foreseeable profit as a result of the decision?
No.
Thank you. And have you received or otherwise engaged in ex parte contact with the applicant, appellant, other interested parties, or members of the public concerning the application either before, during, or after this matter was submitted for decision?
No.
Thank you. And are you able to be impartial in this decision?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. All right, at this time, I would ask, Ms. Dow, do you have a presentation? Or any words you'd like to say to the commission with regard to your application? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. If you could start by stating your name and spelling your last name.
My name is Whitney. Last name is Dow, D as in Dog, O W. I think Rick said it all. Been working with him and Peggy, and they've been phenomenal. I think they've covered. They've covered everything and had us well prepared. But I'm prepared to answer questions or give you any information that you may need.
Great, thank you. I did notice it was a very thorough packet, so I'm sure it took you some time, but thank you. All right, let me ask the commission. Are there any questions for staff or from Ms. Dow? Any questions at all? Commissioner Kendrick, do you have any questions for staff or from Ms. Dow?
No, no, no questions. It looks like a pretty complete package.
Thank you, sir. At this time then, I would like to open up the public hearing on Resolution 2301. And if you'd like to, if you're on the phone and would like to speak on this resolution, please press star three. Are there any persons in the audience that would like to speak on Resolution 2301? All right, anyone online for Resolution 2301? Okay, thank you very much. Seeing and hearing that there are no other persons to be heard, is there any objection to closing the public hearing? Any objection? Seeing no objection? So hearing and seeing no objection? Commissioner Kendrick? Thank you, Jason. Commissioner Kendrick, do you object to closing the public hearing?
No objection.
Thank you, sir. All right, then hearing and seeing no objection, we will close the public hearing. All right. The Chair will now entertain a motion for Resolution 2301.
This is Commissioner Kendrick. This is Commissioner Kendrick. I got to move Resolution 23-01.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chairman. I would just like to confirm that the approval of 2301 will also include the amendment, the addition of two additional findings of fact and conditions of approval.
This is Jason Ortiz, Development Services Manager. It would be making sure that you guys are agreeing to the resolution that was provided in the handout. So it would be all in your guys' what he, what Mr. Benedict just kind of explained. So everyone's in agreement. It's the same thing, but just what we just put out. That's what he's just double checking.
Right. So, yeah, I just, that's a good point of clarity there. But the resolution that we have in our packet is the one that we're voting on. Everybody's on the same page there? Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so that was, in terms of the motion, was made by Commissioner Kendrick. And the second was Commissioner Glenn. All right. Any further discussion on this matter? And again, Caleb, anybody on the phone? Has anybody called in? Okay, thank you. All right. If there's no other discussion, then please vote on the amendment at this time. Yes, vote means you approve the motion. A no vote means you do not approve the motion. And I think we are, we're going to do a roll call though?
Commissioner Glenn?
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubio?
Yes.
Commissioner Kendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Scoggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Motion passes with a unanimous vote. And that concludes that matter. Thank you. Moving on to public hearing for legislative matters. Resolution 23-02. A resolution of the Matanuska Susitna Borough Planning Commission recommending approval of an ordinance amending MSB 1730, conditional use permit for earth materials extraction activities to allow for an exemption of 10,000 cubic yards annually without a permit. Referenced by the Assembly, due back to Assembly by February 20, 2023. Staff is Alex Strong, Planning and Land Use Director. Mr. Strong, take it away, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of Planning Commission, Alex Strong, Planning Director for the Mattsu Borough. So this ordinance changes the threshold at which a permit is required for gravel operations. And just to go into a little bit of history, the borough originally adopted gravel regulations in 2005 with the purpose of protecting members of the public from the inherent things associated with gravel pits such as dust, noise, traffic, in particular, to try to protect residential neighborhoods from the effects of that. The way they originally set it up was a very low threshold for needing a permit. I think it was something like 750 cubic feet. It was actually originally measured in cubic feet, which is essentially nothing. A couple of years later, they went ahead and modified it. They wanted to provide an exemption for the small time operator, and they made it at 2,000 cubic feet. I think that was around 2007 they made that change. Or 2,000 cubic yards, I apologize. And that's where it's at right now. And just to give you kind of a point of reference, in case you didn't already know, your standard gravel truck is about 10 cubic yards. So that's about 200 loads of gravel leaving a site that currently you can do that without requiring a permit. Anything above that does require a permit. And the existing way the permit structure is, is there's options. If you want to do a gravel operation, you can either stay under the 2,000 cubic yards. If you're going to go over 2,000 cubic yards, you have the option of getting administrative permit. If the operation concludes within a two-year period, so if you have like a specific highway project, the Planning and Land Use Director can process a permit on an expedited timeframe, allowing you to haul as much gravel as you want as long as it's done within a two-year period. Or there's also the option, if you want to haul 7,000 cubic yards in perpetuity, the planning director can also process that with an administrative permit. What this ordinance does is raises the threshold at which you need a permit to 10,000 cubic yards. So anything below that does not require any permit at all. So about 1,000 gravel loads. And then the administrative permit goes away. So you basically have, under 10,000 cubic yards, nothing, or over 10,000 cubic yards requires a conditional use permit that would be approved by this body. So that's the nature of the ordinance. I'll answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Any commissioners have questions for Mr. Strong? Any questions about the ordinance? Those ordinance? All right. Commissioner Kendrick, do you have any questions? For Mr. Strong?
No, no questions at this time.
All right, thank you, sir. So at this time, we would like to open the public hearing on Resolution 2301. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this resolution, please press star three. Caleb, do you have anybody on the phone? Thank you, sir. Are there any persons in the audience that would like to speak to this resolution? Thank you, sir. If you could just please state your name and spell your last. Thank you. I think your mic's not on, sir. There you go, thanks.
Steve Colligan, C-O-L-L-I-G-A-N, resident of Wasilla. I represent Alaska Rock Products. We are an organization of gravel operators and aggregate producers that meet regularly to establish and help each other with best practices. They're also competitors in the industry and construction and all sorts of things, but we get together around these subjects to help out. We've spoken on this when it was proposed at 20,000 yards of exemption. We've spoken in the past about other issues, and people have confused cubic feet versus cubic yards and all sorts of other things. Industry is always looking for consistency. And what we can tell you in the last 15 years, for those that have been around for that long, that the current ordinances, the current process, is consistent. It's fair. It's not onerous. And it allows some input from the public, but also lets the operators and stuff know what the operations are, and it's been very consistent. We've enjoyed a very well-educated borough staff that understands the process and is helpful rather than turning the book around and reading us the regulations. It's been a good, I think, process period. There's other members here to speak that have also been around before this. It was kind of a bit of chaos. None of us are in favor. I'm not going to sit here and preach that we want regulations. But in this case, in this operation, there are other reporting requirements with DNR above 2,000 yards. Not just so, if you pass this, it's not going to exempt persons' responsibility for any development. It's just the communication with the borough. The other thing is, we're not sure, you know, why this is necessarily here other than it historically, you know, the Planning Commission has also had 100 people show up for a thing, for an issue that may not really affect, it's kind of an activist. And rather than weighing something on the merits, it sometimes gets bound up in a public opinion process. I think we've enjoyed a kind of an even-handed and really support the existing regulations. And although this seems like nothing, the reality is, it's not much. There's not a heavy lift, as Mr. Strong did a professional description of the current process at several levels to produce gravel. And with that, we'd glad to answer any questions. We've testified in the past. But I think, you know, in general, the industry is pleased. We're very much appreciative of all your time, volunteering your time to be on the Planning Commission. Sometimes it's not fun. But the bottom line, I think, in this case, this process has already been well-rounded. It's been in place for, you know, over 15 years. And I think things, I think the borough is looked at and staff is kind of a bit of a model of communication and kind of an even-handed process. So.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions for? Thank you very much. I have Mark Catini, is that right? Please come up, sir, and state your name and spell it for the record.
My name's Mark Catini, and thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. First off, I want you to know that I'm born and raised in this borough, longtime resident, and I'm really proud of the community we live in. Part of that pride comes from having regulations that everyone can live with and work with and creates a nice community, continues to create a nice community we work in. I also have the benefit of being a landowner that has a gravel pit on it. So my wife and I receive the royalties from the operator that works there. And as owners of the land, we're very cognizant of our neighbors and trying to make sure that we're good operators, we're good neighbors. What I'm concerned about when you allow an operator to come in without any knowledge and allow them to take out 10,000, increase this to 10,000 cubic yards, you can only be a good neighbor if you're knowledgeable about the regulations and requirements. And if you don't know those and someone doesn't educate you to that, you're going to be doing stuff that's going to upset neighbors, and those folks are going to be calling to burrow. I can tell you from public, from working out there, it's a very difficult business to be a good neighbor when someone doesn't want a gravel pit in their backyard or a neighbor to them. The other thing is, I have the benefit of being a professional engineer. There was on a work group that the borough set up to write this regs that you're looking at to modify. And I know you guys have to pass this up to the Assembly, and it doesn't come from you guys. you guys have to pass this up to the Assembly, and it, it doesn't come from you guys. I know it doesn't originate from you guys. But I, I want to tell you, you don't know how many clients have come into my office, and I've had to educate them about reclamation permits that are required, water tables that are required. If you take away the 2,000 threshold and you bump it up to 10,000, now there's, all these operators are going to be out there, and there's a high probability they don't understand the regs and what to do to keep this a good community. And I strongly recommend you do not approve it. Also, one thing I'm going to have to take exception with, and, and we're really good friends, we're associates, but as I read the code, there's a two-year requirement in there, and Murph O'Brien, who had contacts at DOT, set this code up so that contractors doing road jobs could come in, get an administrative permit from his office, and go and do a road job and get gravel and have, not have to go through the lengthy Planning Commission process. So I, I'd like a double look at that because I'm really concerned that in trying to increase this, we're going to do a detriment to all of our contractors out there that have to build these state and federal projects. I guess I'm out of time.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Strong, do you have any comments in response to the, the public hearing?
So I just, I guess I would just confirm that that process for a two-year permit is in place right now. We are, when we receive a complete application, the Planning Director is required to make a decision within, I believe, 30 days from, from receiving it. So it is a, a expedited process, but that would be going away with this ordinance. So, yep.
Thank you, sir. All right, well, the chair will now entertain a motion for Resolution 2301 for discussion purposes.
This is Commissioner Kandig. I move Resolution 23-02.
I believe it's 20, okay, yeah, that's correct. I've got a typo here. Yep, 23-02, thank you. Is there a second?
Commissioner Skoggins will second that.
Thank you. All right.
And, and I'd like to speak, I'd like to speak to it if I could.
Just, just one second. We'll get to discussion here in just one second. So just for the record, Commissioner Kandig made the motion. It was seconded by Commissioner Skoggins. All right, now we can move to discussion and any possible proposed amendments to the motion. Commissioner Kandig?
Yeah, I, I'm in favor of, of it. And with all due respect to the first two speakers, they represent industry, and it could affect their profit margin. And as far as contractors go, one of the biggest expenses is trucking and how, how far of a distance they have to truck gravel for whatever jobs they're doing. And the, the existing gravel pits are larger distance. This would shorten, shorten the period and save state and private industry a lot of money. And the, and the Assembly seems to be in favor of this. That's why they sent it to us, for us to, to give it a, a glance. But I'm in favor of the motion.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Kandig. I apologize. I'm sorry, this is my first time serving as chair. I neglected to formally close the public hearing, so I'll just go ahead and do that now. Public hearing is now closed. All right. Any other commissioners? Would any other commissioners like to discuss this matter?
I get, I guess my comment would be is, I, I like the idea of it, but I also know that if someone goes on a lot and digs a hole, it takes 10,000 yard right next to somebody's house, that's going to be a problem. I, I think it's, it's, it would be, I think it'd be, it's a good idea, but I think it, it needs a little bit of a guidance with it, I guess, you know? I mean, it, it, it just opens up, and like these gentlemen had said, you know, you're going, you get the wrong guy in there, digs a big hole, and he don't care. And then the rest of the industry suffers. So I don't, I don't know. I'm a little, I think there should be, I don't mind the 10,000 yard one-time deal, but I'd also, I see both sides of it, I guess. It's, I'm undecided on it right now.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Skoggins.
And, and thirty chairs, Bill Kandig again. The, the other thing I forgot to mention is, back in 2007, when they made these changes, there was a, a, a whole bunch of existing gravel pits that never got grandfathered in. They had to go through a, a process to, to do that. And many of them didn't go through that process. So they're, they're the ones here stuck in limbo.
All right, any other comments? Thank you, Commissioner Kandig. Any other comments from other commissioners? Yes, I, I have a few. This is Commissioner Allen. You know, the last time we, we dealt with this issue, I believe I said that it was a solution in search of a problem, and I still feel that way. I have to agree with the speakers from the industry that we have a stable framework right now that I think is working for, for, for the most part. And also, you know, we received several letters in our packet in vehement opposition to this. People in the community worried about an unfettered flow of, of, of trucks going through their neighborhood, destroying their roads. And they received, you know, no benefit but only harm from that. I, I think those concerns are well-founded as well. And when we had, when we, when we brought up this issue before, as I recall, we had several members of the community in the audience that spoke out against this provision. And I, I just, in my mind, I don't see what's changed. From, I haven't heard anything really that, that is, has moved the needle where I'm sitting. But that, that's just my, my point of view, and I just wanted to share my thoughts on it. Anybody else with comments or proposed amendments with regard to this matter? All right, so at this point, we can vote on the motion. So can we do a roll call vote then? Yeah, yes is, yes is, yes, I want to clarify. So yes would pass this change, would pass this amendment, or this resolution. No would fail the resolution. Any questions about that from anybody? Okay.
Commissioner Skoggins?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
No.
Commissioner Kandig?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubio?
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Commissioner Glenn?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
No.
The motion passes, five to two.
All right. The main motion has passed. All right, moving on to score correspondence and information. Correspondence?
No correspondence that we have here.
Okay, thank you. Unfinished business, Mr. Ortiz.
Jason Ortiz here, Development Services Manager. So we do need to have a Planning Commission member volunteer for this Susitna Basin Recreation Rivers Board. The board meets on the fourth Wednesday of the month, from March through November, virtually via Teams from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. February 22nd, I'm not sure with this. Okay, yeah. So is there any commissioner that's interested in sitting on the board? Commissioner Skoggins?
I give it my best shot.
Okay, so what, what, Commissioner Skoggins has volunteered for the Susitna Basin Recreation Rivers Board. And Commissioner Skoggins, we will need you to reach out to law. They do need to do just a legal analysis to ensure that there's not an incompatible, incompatibility for the seat. So that's just answering some simple questions there. So we appreciate you volunteering in your service for that.
Okay, it looks like new business and doesn't appear to be any new business. So we'll move on to commission business. Borough Area School Site Selection Committee, Mr. Ortiz.
Jason Ortiz here. So the Borough Area School Site Selection Committee, the Borough Assembly has ultimate authority on the location of the Matt Nuska Susitna Borough Schools within the borough pursuant to MSB 19 dot 08 dot 020. And the Borough Area Selection Site, Selection Committee is tasked with making recommendations on the location of schools with the assistance of borough staff. The committee is made up of Planning Commission, Assembly, School Board, and at-large members. At this time, at this time, the committee only meets when there is a school in need of a site or charter school pursuing the purchase of a permanent site. The committee met three times in 2021 to find sites for Matsu School, Matsu Central School, Birch Tree Charter, and American Charter Academy, but they did not meet for over a decade prior to 2021. The School Site Selection Committee is important for planning for the borough's future and making those recommendations. Do we have any, anybody that would be willing to serve on that committee? Any commissioners? Go in once, go in twice.
If, if nobody else will do it, I'll, I'll, I'll serve on it. Bill Kandig.
Okay, Commissioner Kandig has volunteered for that, so we'll go ahead and, and get you attached with that. And we appreciate your service to that, Commissioner Kandig.
All right, moving on to upcoming Planning Commission agenda items. Mr. Ortiz, please give us an update on upcoming agenda items.
This is, I'm not going to read over the list because not much has changed from the last time I read over some of the legislative and quasi-judicial items that I covered with you guys. So they are in your packets on page 216 and 217 for commissioners and for members of the public that want to review upcoming items. Does anyone have questions about any of those upcoming items for me at all? No, doesn't look like it. Commissioner Kandig, any questions?
No, no questions.
Okay, all right. Yeah, and the only other thing I will just, just make sure that on quasi-judicial matters, that we are not doing any fact-finding missions or anything like that. All questions on quasi-judicial, make sure they're coming through, right here through the clerk, through Ms. Reese, and she can get those questions disseminated, answered, and get them back to you guys. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. So moving on to director and commissioner comments. Commissioner Kandig, any comments today?
No comments today. Thank you.
You bet. Commissioner Rubio?
Nope, no comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Skoggins?
No comments.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to apologize for my tardiness. Road conditions coming in from Anchorage got a little bit sketchy, so caution was needed, and that unfortunately did delay my arrival. I would also ask, you know, rather than justifying a vote in particular, especially since it's already passed, I guess I would just leave the board with this, or the commission with this. Oftentimes, the loudest voices in any room is going to be those who stand to lose and those who stand to win on any resolution. They are not the only members of our community that are affected by our decisions. And so though they are not here to speak for themselves, I would just ask that as we move forward as a commission, that we consider all angles and, and consider all those who are involved in any decision that's made. And I really look forward to serving with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fernandez. And, and, you know, no apology needed about the tardiness. If you ever read, you can see how nasty it is out there. So just glad you made it here safely. Commissioner Cohen?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Glenn?
Nothing to say here. Thank you.
All right. Looks like Mr. Strong is not with us. Mr. Ortiz?
I wanted to say thank you to, to you, Mr. Chair, for stepping up here, being as the vice chair, but stepping in as the chair, and also to Hannah. Thanks for, this is Hannah's last meeting at the Planning Commission. She's going to be leaving the borough, and we thank you for your short service here, but we, we appreciated you having here as a borough attorney, assistant attorney. And that's it. Thank you, thank you guys all for a good evening.
Madam Clerk, any comments today?
The only ones I have are what's going to be on our next meeting, which isn't until March 6th. We don't have a meeting February 20th, so don't show up.
Okay.
And you won't get any emails asking if you're going to be here, but please do respond to those as quickly as you can. We have for introduction for public hearing legislative matters, amending MSB 1755 and 1780, which is setbacks, amending 1705, which is essential services utility standards, and amending MSB 1524031, which is initiation and amending lake management plans. And then the public hearing we have is for onsite consumption.
Okay, thank you. And to the commission, thank you for bearing with me today. It was obviously my first time as chair, and I promise to do better next time. All right. At this point, the meeting will adjourn at 6:44.